I'm sorry, Susan. I'll do it again. I would call this meeting to order the Calaveras County Governments at 5:31. Could we do the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. A rigid stance.
Okay, in this first item, after the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to hand off to Monica for some legal clarification. So, item one is a motion to approve member request, so, for emergency circumstances. Monica, I think you're up.
Yes, well, good evening, members of the court. This, I made your call, I believe this afternoon, we had an overview, the changes to the bracket, and what is on my right now, for my participation. But I'm so used to Assembly Bill 361 to need participation, easy there are procedural groups or prerequisites requirements that had to be complied with in order for me to participate with that way. That went away, as of yesterday, from May 28, the California COVID state of emergency came to an end. So now, we are under provisions of what's referred to the Assembly Bill 2449, all the traditional rules of the bracket. I didn't have any agenda, but motion to approve member request to participate in emergency circumstances is a placeholder for members of the board who need to participate in emergency circumstances as that does require board approval. There's enough provision for them to participate regardless just cause, and that does not require board approval. I believe that this evening, we do have two members who are participating in emergency for just cause.
Okay.
So, this item does not withstand a motion, because they're not participating in emergency circumstances. So this will just be a placeholder should we need. But for this evening, we should just note for whatever, that we have two numbers, it is a member, and Tim Uddides, who is participating in emergency for just cause, is a member of official agency, trauma, for caregiving need.
Okay. Do I have to restate that, or is Monica stating not good enough?
I think that should be good enough.
Okay, well then, item number one, then, we will move on from that, because we didn't have to make a motion. So, item number two, or consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial, and will be acted upon in the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, interested party may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything off the consent agenda? Anything online, Aaron? Okay. If not, I would look for a motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call, Monica, since two people are online?
Oh yeah, two people are online, that's right, yes.
Yes, please, if you could identify, for some reason, for those of us online, we're not able to see the background there, and also, it's difficult for us to tag out who's making a motion in a second.
Okay. So we had Pat with the first, and Justin with the second, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we'll do a roll call vote, Aaron, if that's okay?
Yes.
Or Callie, or...
Okay.
All right.
Roll call vote, consent item, or consent agenda, Amanda Follendorf. I can see her, I can hear her, moving, but, oh, she said...
Do you have your microphone on, so she can hear you?
Yeah.
Amanda, can you hear us?
She gave us some...
She said yes.
Okay, she said yes, okay.
Gary Tofanelli?
Aye.
Alvin Brolio?
Aye.
Isabel Moncada?
Aye.
Justin Catalano?
Aye.
Tim Uddides?
Aye.
Pat Beddinger?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Okay, we will now move on to regular agenda. Item number six, public comment. Five minutes per person. Comments shall be limited to items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council and not on the posted agenda. Government Code Section 5495-9543. Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I will close public comment. And, Robert, we're going to move you up to this time, so you can get out of here if need be, if that works for you.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll now move on to county reports. So we'll move 11 up.
Thank you very much. As you may be aware, the wagon trail project is currently kind of in, I would say, winter operations. There's still some monitoring going on, archaeological work is continuing, and we're getting ready to start the coming season with the continued construction of the eastern half of the western half of Phase One. So that's ongoing. As far as Phase Two is concerned, we had a kickoff meeting about a week or so ago. I'm losing my time with all that snow that we're dealing with. So, we've had a kickoff meeting, one of the first courses of action that they're going to, that Duber is going to perform, is to start reaching out to the landowners for permission to enter, to start getting onto the sites, and to complete the environmental evaluation and some preliminary archaeological work. They should be doing that, letters out, I believe, in this month, we're in March already, and we're going, we're moving along. So those are the big updates on wagon trail. There's a lot of activity going on in Phase One that, as we get going, I'll be able to bring more to you. I'm hoping that you were able to drive on it and you could see how that's going. There is one area, close to the conform of the new roadway with the old Highway Four, that a spring was found, so they have plates over that area. That's going to be fixed when they finish that roadway going out to Bonanza, to Bonanza Way. So that, those are the plates there, they'll stay there for now. ATP projects, is the Pope Street project, the preliminary work is going to start here soon. We need to go out with a request for proposals to solicit consultants to start doing the design work and so forth, so that will be starting here in a little while. Valley Springs, the Valley Springs School Safety Project, that's also going on its way. Docking Engineering is trying to complete design plans that we could go out to, for construction in the coming year. Any questions?
Need staff or council? Go for it, Gary.
Oh, you're listening? You do it so well.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, Robert, I have a meeting tomorrow at 1:00 with Pope Street residents. Can you make sure Scott's there? He knows about it, but I need to make sure that he's there, because the three things that we're putting in, the speed tables that are going in there temporarily?
Yes.
Before the improvements. So, 1:00. And then the other question had to do with wagon trail, and we had a little bit of discussion yesterday about some delays that has to do with the, we have the archaeological thing where the wall goes, where we found the, where the city or whatever it was there, and you'd said that we have the plans for that wall completed, and they're at Caltrans right now? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, the contractor has, is, they've evaluated the cost for the change, change order. They've proposed an alternative to what was originally designed. The alternative looks acceptable, it looks like it's something that Caltrans has accepted in the past to build. We're getting confirmation from Caltrans that that's okay to proceed with. We're, I guess you can say, trying to get the Department of Fish and Wildlife folks to let us proceed sooner. There's water in that creek, so we're going to have to do some diversion there, we need to get permission for fish and wildlife, so there are a lot of moving parts going on in that spot.
All right.
But we need every moment that we can get to build that stuff right now.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Robert, from staff, council, public? Okay, thanks, Robert.
Thank you very much.
No problem, have a good evening.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
We have Dennis Agar on the phone.
Oh, is Dennis?
Yeah, for the Caltrans report is next.
Okay, so, next we'll go back to item number seven for Caltrans reports, and Dennis, I believe you're here.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, we can, Dennis, good evening.
Okay, great, good evening, Chair, and council members, the Chair of the Executive Director, Ligon was there, but of course, members of the public, Caltrans District 10 Director, as you all know, Marlon Regisford, my deputy has also joined me this evening. I will provide some highlights and management, and then, of course, pass it on to Marlon to share more funding opportunities that are upcoming. So let me just start, I overdid the discussion with Robert on the wagon trail. I'm already putting down and make sure I follow with my team, if you turn around, I'll say new on the wall design, if we proved this before, there shouldn't be any reason why we can't expedite that work, so you guys got more time to work, years fish and wildlife service to get things started, so I did that, I did put that on my notes to do, to pull on you. Some of the updates I wanted to give, I'll read everything about some discussions on a lot of the snow that our DAs have been receiving, especially at the whole elevations. Maintenance crews, as you know, have been continuing with these, these storm cleanups throughout your county, with no, we've had multiple flooding and landslides, of course, the heavy snow in downstreams during this time. Maintenance crews have been really working, seven days a week, 24-hour, 1:00, 2-hour shifts, just really trying to keep up with these storms, good thing, things are starting to slow down, at least as far as the rain. More snow is anticipated this Saturday, as you probably know already. Yeah, we appreciate everybody's patience, and we continue to keep safety as they're done, as they age them through, you know, it's up there. Maintenance folks are also continuing to step up in regards to littering in your county, that also includes Amigal and Tohoni. We just added another litter crew to the team to kind of help, again, provide that service to clear out trails over the highways, so we hope to continue to keep them, these clean. The other couple updates I wanted to give, is regards to Clean California, you probably heard this from Marlin, and again, which I was remembering, the Cycle Two Local Grant for Beautification Projects is out and open for corporate projects, and it's another hundred million to compete statewide, and a real opportunity. The deadline for that is April 28, and if any one of you, or the county, or the city is interested or trying to compete for the local beautification grant, opportunity, you might get some of our help through Sam Sherman, the Clean California Coordinator, to come to help, making sure that your applications are competitive, please let us know, and sooner the better. Along with Clean California, probably heard about our community days that are upcoming just in a couple weeks. It's really looking forward to statewide effort, all the districts, and all the districts are asking all our local partners, counties, cities to participate from March 17 through March 27, and that's this month, and it's upcoming pretty quick. And we're hoping that even we can find opportunities to get our local neighborhoods or communities to get involved, whether it's litter pickup, tree plantings, disposal, dump events, even the dump hallway cleanups, and other beautification activities during that whole week. I know that March 25th is one of those focus days where, you know, the governor or director will be participating wherever they can statewide with this effort. So I just look forward to, again, continue to partner with all our partners, to work together, the people, communities, and it's not just on the ways, it's everywhere. We actually have a portal, a general public, to go in there and sign up for these events. It'd be nice to get the communities in Calaveras County to participate as well. I will send a flyer, try to attach the flyer with the information on the chat, and hopefully you guys all receive it. So that's, I really wanted to share that, and again, look forward to everyone participating across the district and our counties, and of course, I look forward to great public outreach statewide. I'll stop there, and pass it on to Marlon, registered, for any other updates that he can handle. Guys, from my voice, I've just been under the weather and recovering, so I appreciate the opportunity to join on Zoom.
Marlon? Thank you, Dennis, thank you board members, Chair, Bound Director. I'll just give a brief update from the planning side, thanks again for the time, and you know, Dennis just mentioned the Clean California Local Grant Program of Cycle Two, proposals. We just got word out in the press today that there's a workshop announced for this program, and it is on March 15, so 15 days from now, and it's going to be from 1:00 a.m. to 1:30 a.m. It will be posted on the website, and also will be recorded on the website as well, so if you guys have interest, please do feel free to participate. If you'd like further information on the program itself, feel free to get in contact with myself, Gregoria Ponse, our rural planning manager. I'll mention a couple other funding opportunities that are happening as well. Obviously, our Sustainable Transportation Funding Program, I'll give one, you know, one more call for that, we do have our demo coming up, it's on March 9, and I do appreciate the call, actually, you know, sharing interest in the program, so looking forward to any proposals that come out of there from Calaveras County. But we do want to also mention our I-CAR funding grant, which is an Integrated Climate Adaptation and Resilience Program, Climate Adaptation Thank You, sorry, long-winded there, but this is a program that has $6.6 million of funding in there, is to really accelerate, sorry, minimize impacts of climate change, particularly flooding, landslides, wildfires, and the like. So this is actually eligible for local government agencies and tribal organizations as well. So the deadline for this is on March 31st, at the end of the month, and this is posted also on our grants.ca.gov website, so I'm happy to share any additional information that I can post in the chat as well. Office of Planning and Research from the Governor's Office also has $21.3 million in particular regarding climate adaptation resilience. The deadline is April 26, very similarly, public agencies and tribal governments and nonprofits eligible for funding, we can definitely share that information as well. There's another Environmental Justice Program Grant from U.S. EPA Environmental Protection Agency that's also available, and that's a larger funding request nationwide, and there's $70 million available, so if you're interested in that, I can share that as well. But I definitely want to make sure that the board is aware of upcoming funding opportunities. Lastly, I'll mention, and this alluded, maintenance team is hard at work in trying to repair the weatherways in response to the storms, but I do want to mention, we do have some work going on in Calaveras County and State Route 26, that is actually happening from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m., this is in the daytime, we're doing one-way traffic, and it's going to be utility work, so if you're in the Hogan Dam area near the west, please be aware, our maintenance crew will be doing work out there, so just be safe. That concludes my updates, I am happy to take in questions or concerns, and thanks again for the time.
Thank you, Dennis, thank you, Marlon. Is there any? I have, Justin, go ahead.
I've got a question. Excuse me. A few months ago, the Board of Supervisors were talking about agritourism, and I was curious, if there is some agritourism happening related to cannabis, does that, is there like, if there's an influx of traffic, does that, does our county, can they, can we handle having an influx of traffic if we started a new industry here?
I can take that one, Dennis. Well, what typically happens is the lead agency, whether it be the county or the city, will determine if that tourism is in fact an actual project, per the California Environment Quality Act sequel, and if it's determined that there's a, it is a project, then there would need to be an environmental, a traffic analysis, and environmental analysis done at that time, and at that time, then Caltrans would likely be involved in the review of that document, the environmental document and the traffic study document, so at that point, then we'd be able to determine whether there's a traffic impact based on this tourism or any other project for that matter. So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, that's adequate.
Gary, did you have something?
Yeah, 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 I do. First, Marlon and Dennis, thank you guys for, this time of year is very difficult for you guys in continuous work, and your crews, not only in District 10, clearing Highway Four and the other highways we have here, and I saw in the news before I came here today that I-80 is supposed to be open today, with the tremendous amount of traffic that was stopped there on Highway 50, but I don't know how long it's going to be open, they'll be back out there after the weekend trying to open it up again, it just seems to continue to come, just stage after stage, but they're out there all the time, much like our road crews here in Calaveras and other counties, continuous work, and just want to thank you guys and thank your crews for all the hard work they put in right now. And then I had one other question, Marlon, you mentioned 12 and 26, and I wasn't clear on where, you're talking at the intersection of 12 and 26, in Valley Springs, or New Hogan Dam Road, like 26 and New Hogan Dam, or where is the work going to be, one-way traffic?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Supervisor, yeah, it was actually on State Route 26 between Hogan Dam Road and State Route 12 West.
Okay, and that's tomorrow, one day only?
Tomorrow morning, yes, just tomorrow morning.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? So I, this is Alvin, Marlon, and Dennis, I just wanted to say thank you guys. On February 8, there was the Caltrans workshop for the Highway Four and 49 at the Bret Hart High School there. I thought it was very informative, talked to a lot of people, they appreciated the information that was there, there was a ton of information, so, well, the staff that was there was pretty amazing in answering questions, there were some people that were pretty outspoken in different things, but overall, I think it was very well received, and thank you guys for your staff and your time, it was pretty amazing evening, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Council members and Chair for your comments, appreciate them.
Anybody else before we move on? All right, moving on to item number eight, a minute order approving fiscal year 22-23 Overall Work Program, OWP, Administrative Amendment Number Two, Ms. Raggio.
Thank you Vice Chair Brolio. For those who are watching who can't see, Melissa Raggio, Executive Director for Calaveras Council of Governments, this item is the fiscal year 22-23 Overall Work Program Amendment Number Two. This amendment was needed to include the Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Implementation Plan. The council had approved the contract at our February 1 meeting, and now we need to include it into our overall work program. If you want to look at the funding sheet in your packet on page 27, I've highlighted the work elements that have been amended. The total dollar amount of this amendment is an increase of $49,549. If you want to look at work element number 16, that's the Calaveras County Electric Vehicle Charging Plan. Originally, in Amendment One, we had it budgeted at $45,000, so we've increased that work element to $1,13,235. I've also increased work elements 3, 4, and 14 in the COG column, that is for COG staff time, based on where we're tracking, and then that total dollar amount that it was increased was offset by work element number 13. We've completed that study, we submitted the TSEP grant, so we moved the remaining funding that was allocated for staffing to the other work elements. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Talking to myself, any staff, any council questions?
Yeah, we've increased the GHG...
Yep.
Money by $25,000, is that...
I increased it by $10,000.
By $10,000?
Yes. That is for COG staff time.
Okay, that's for COG staff time, not for the...
Not contract. So now that we've been doing all this additional work, you know, doing the amendment, we had to increase COG staff time that was allocated originally.
Yeah, okay.
Tim, Amanda, you guys got any questions? I keep forgetting you guys out there, I'm sorry. Okay, I see head shaking now. Anybody else in the room? Any public comment on this item? If not, I would look for, no, we have to, yes, a minute approval.
It's a minute order.
It's a minute order.
Yeah.
Approving, I would look for a motion to move, for approving the minute order.
I'll move to approve it.
I'll second.
Justin with the first, Pat with the second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, or, actually, we got a roll call. Let me back that wagon up. Cal, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes. Roll call vote, agenda item number eight, Amanda Follendorf.
She said aye, it just didn't come through.
Okay, thank you. Gary Tofanelli?
Aye.
Alvin Brolio?
Aye.
Isabel Moncada?
Aye.
Justin Catalano?
Aye.
Tim Uddides?
Aye.
Pat Beddinger?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passed. No, not motion, minute order. Item number nine, minute order approving the fiscal year 23-24 Draft Operations Budget. Melissa.
Thank you Vice Chair Brolio, Melissa Raggio, Executive Director. This item, like Alvin said, is the 23-24 Draft Operations Budget. If you wanted to look at the worksheet on your, in your packet on page 39, there is an overall decrease of $14,847 from the previous fiscal year. A majority of this, or the largest part of this, is it attributed to the decrease in salaries and benefits. Last year, with the turnover in new employees, they start at the beginning of the salary grade, and we have no longevity merits, so we are under budget from previous year. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Online, anybody have a question? Tim, Amanda? Okay, all right.
That was a no.
That was a no. Any public comment on this item? If not, I would be looking for a motion to approve minute order for Draft Operations Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Pat with the first, Justin with the second, can we get a roll call, please?
Roll call vote, agenda item number nine, Amanda Follendorf.
She said aye.
Thank you. Gary Tofanelli?
Aye.
Alvin Brolio?
Aye.
Isabel Moncada?
Aye.
Justin Catalano?
Aye.
Tim Uddides?
Aye.
Pat Beddinger?
Aye.
Second. Passes. Number 10, Resolution Number FY2323. Number 10, resolution, uh, number FY 23, 23, approving the F- fiscal year 23, 24 draft overall work program, OWP, and planning program and monitoring expenditure plan. Melissa.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brolio. Um, this item is the fiscal year 23, 24 draft overall work program. Annually, a draft overall work program is due to Caltrans. Um, it's due March 1st of every year. The draft funding summary is in your packet on page 62. In, on this worksheet, the top portion of the worksheet is all, are all the revenue sources. These are estimates. If you notice, there are no carryover dollar amounts. Um, Caltrans does not allow us to estimate our carryover in the draft or the final. Usually, we submit in the work element number one to the council in October. This is after we've completed reconciling year-end, and we have our certification of expenditures approved by Caltrans. The bottom portion of the overall work program, um, details all of the work elements. In the narrative portion of the overall work program, you will see where we've identi- identified COG staff time and contracts. Every column that has a COG total on it is in the operations budget. So this overall work program totals $1,033,776. Are there any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Any council questions? Anybody online? Tim, Amanda? Tim's shaking his head. No, no. Okay. Any public comment on this item? Okay. If not, I would bring it back and look for an approval of the resolution FY 23, 23.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion. So Isabel and Alvin, for a second. All in favor, actually. Roll call, please.
Roll call vote, agenda item number 10, Amanda Follendorf.
Hi.
Gary Tofanelli?
Holly, tell him I said hi.
Oh, she can hear you, but her mic's not working. I don't know, so I'm being a voice.
Uh, Alvin Brolio?
Aye.
Isabel Moncada?
Aye.
Justin Catalano?
Aye.
Tim Muddities?
Aye.
Pat Bedtinger?
Aye.
Seven, zero. Hey. Item number 11. We already did the county side of it, so the city report, um, I, I don't know if she's on, and I completely failed, or did you get it? Because I did not call today. I, I completely blew it on this aspect. So I would love to report out next month, if that's okay. So.
That's no problem. We've included the CIP report. It's, if there's a representative here, if there's not, then it's fine.
Okay. I just, I feel bad. I just forgot to, I forgot to check and find out today. Um, so with that, item number 11 is now done. We will move on to item number 12, council reports. We'll start with Justin.
Uh, nothing to report.
Isabel?
Nothing to report.
Pat?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Gary Tofanelli?
I have nothing to report.
Amanda?
No, she hasn't anything to report.
Thanks, Paulie.
You're welcome.
Tim, you got anything?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. And I have nothing to report at this time.
I have nothing to report.
Erin?
I have nothing additional to report, other than the included report in your packet, so let me know if you have questions.
Kelly?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. That's it. I will scratch off number 13. And we'll move on to, are we going to adjourn to a closed session now?
Let's move the item to after the CTA meeting.
Yeah, okay, so that's, we're going to move item number 14 after the CTA, and we will report out next meeting on that, correct? So at this moment, I would look to adjourn this meeting, and we'll take a five-minute break. If that's okay with everybody. All right. We will reconvene as Calaveras Transit Agency at 6:12. Let me pull this out. Okay, is item number one, is, we can just carry over from the previous meeting, correct? We don't have to, do we have to restate that or anything?
We'll just include it in the, the meeting minutes, so we have it as part of the official record, but we don't have to take any action on this item, is correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Monica. So we will put that in the minutes, and next we want to consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine, non-controversial, and will be acted upon at the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff, or interested parties may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion. Any public council staff want to pull anything from consent? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Justin first, Pat second. Can we do a roll call vote, please?
Roll call vote, uh, consent agenda, Amanda Follendorf.
Aye.
Gary Tofanelli?
Aye.
Alvin Brolio?
Aye.
Isabel Moncada?
Aye.
Justin Catalano?
Aye.
Tim Muddities?
Aye.
Pat Bedtinger?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next we move on to regular agenda. Item number six, public comment. Five minutes per person. Comments shall be limited to items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council and not on the posted agenda, Government Code Section 54954 dot 3A. Any public comment online? Okay. I will close public comment and move on to item number seven, a minute order approving fiscal year 23, 24 draft o- operations budget. Hey, man, I'm not there yet, so I'm sorry. Is that?
It's me.
It is you, okay.
Thank you, Vice Chair Brolio. Um, this item is our 23, 24 draft operations budget for the CTA. Um, this budget totals $1,842,443. This is an overall decrease from the previous year of $147,606. The majority of this decrease is in the capital assets line item. It's 5701. Previously, in 2022, 23, there was an FTA bus for the program, 5339. Um, a couple of steps need to be taken care of before we should include this in the budget. STACK has removed it from the 23, 24. We need to do an extension on the agreement. The agreement expires in July. Um, and with the chain of ordering new buses, you know, we need to secure the quote and secure the ordering, and then I will include it in the final. I just wanted to take those extra steps, um, before we include it in our budget. Um, with that, we did receive some bad news regarding our two other buses that have been, um, ordered for over a year now. Um, they want to increase, um, the estimate and the cost. So we've requested that quote, um, in writing. Um, we will be looking at that, and we will be bringing that back to the council for the final budget also. Um, in regards to our electric van, though, um, it's almost ready. They're doing the final checklist, so hopefully we will have the van by the time of our next meeting. Um, we want to bring it down and, and show the council, um, and let them look in the van at our April meeting. Um, in this budget, we've also, um, based on current actuals, um, we've seen a decrease in fuel. I think fuel prices stabilized, so I took the $40,000 that I had increased it last year, um, and I took that out. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, just for like a apples-to-apples comparison, if you look at 22, 23, when you pull out just operating, um, just operating for last year was $1,449,812, and then operations pulling out capital is $1,464,527. So that is a increase, um, comparison of $14,715. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
Okay.
Go for it, Justin.
It's kind of insignificant, but on the special department expense of the board member stipend, um, it says 10 board, oh, excuse me, it says 10 meetings. I thought it said 10 board members.
No worries.
Amanda, Tim, do you guys have any questions? Good and good. Mr. Gary, you're up.
They didn't, yeah.
They both.
I'm, I'm looking at transit ticket sales.
Yep.
And a couple of questions on that. I see we're increasing it from $12,000 to $30,000.
Yep.
So we're increasing ticket, the price of tickets?
Yep, based on what we're seeing right now currently in our actual budget. So we had those budgeted really low for 22, 23, and we're going to double that. So I wanted to show that in this draft.
Okay, so then my next question, I was going to save it till further down, but since we're on that right now. Um, is there anything from the state about them, uh, since we were in COVID? They were, the, our fare box recovery total?
I included that update at our last meeting on consent. Right now, it's going through fiscal year 22, 23, but we're expecting to hear something from the state. And as soon as I do, I will bring it back to the council.
We haven't heard. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
But through this audit of this fiscal year 22, 23, we will be exempt. So, you know, we don't.
For this fiscal year, yeah, going into, yeah.
Yep.
23, 23.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any public comment on this item? Okay, I would look for a minute order approving fiscal year 23, 24 draft overall oper- operations budget.
So moved.
I'll second. Justin first, Alvin second.
Roll call vote, agenda item number seven, Amanda Follendorf.
Aye.
Gary Tofanelli?
Aye.
Alvin Brolio?
Aye.
Isabel Moncada?
Aye.
Justin Catalano?
Aye.
Tim Muddities?
Aye.
Pat Bedtinger?
Aye.
Motion, that passes, seven, oh. Uh, number eight, Transit Capital Improvement Project, CIP Quarterly Report, and this is Ms. Erin.
Um, the report was included in the packet, but Melissa's kind of reviewed all the stuff that was on it, so, um, unless you have any questions, I don't have anything to add.
Any questions? Okay. Amanda, Tim? No. Okay. There's nothing to vote on that. I was just informational. So number nine, Paratransit Service. You're up.
Good evening, Cynthia Lawrence, Paratransit Services, Calaveras Connect, Transit Manager. Um, well, February, the month of love, and it was a month of love of preparing for, uh, all the wonderful events that have been going on. Um, we were asked by OES to provide, uh, dial-a-ride services, uh, for the disaster recovery FEMA group over in Frog Town. Uh, that went from February 1st to February 10th. Um, so we stood ready for that. Um, and then we, um, also set up some additional emergency teams for, um, what we saw was an upcoming, uh, weather event, and, um, I was thankful to do that. So we put together some bags that, um, not only had safety devices, you know, uh, cleats for your feet, uh, hand warmers, um, knee pads and whatnot in case we had to do chaining up. Um, and we also put together bags, uh, just in case we had evacuees, um, like we did one year, I think it was last year. Um, and we were asked to help evacuate some people up country. Um, and we wanted to be prepared for that. A lot of times, people leave out, they don't have anything. Um, and we saw that with this, with the flooding as well. Um, and so we put together some, um, giveaway bags so that they would have hand warmers, a small blanket, um, like a snack bar and some drinks and things like that. So we have all of that ready to go um, at a moment's notice, and my team was on standby just in case we did get that call. Luckily, we didn't, and everybody was okay. Uh, about mid-month, uh, we started receiving call, or I actually reached out to OES and, uh, because we were receiving calls about warming center, and they did put together a warming center here in San Andreas from 9:00 to 5:00, Monday through Friday. Um, so we, um, opened up our dial-a-ride for that as well to provide transportation for the warming center here in, uh, San Andreas. I think we picked up some people from Angels, uh, going to the warming center. Um, and what else do we have? I think that's about it. We've been mostly just trying to stay on track with the road closures. Um, today, for instance, as you know, up country, they, both lanes are closed, um, just past, what, Forest Meadows, I think. Um, and, and just, just trying to stay on that weather alert to let people know what we're available to do and not do. Columbia College has had multiple days where they've closed. We usually don't find out what their closure is until about 6:00 in the morning. So we've been trying to sort of anticipate and put it up on our Facebook to let them know, hey, we're, they're probably going to be closed. Um, but now they're out of electricity, so we're not even sure if they'll open tomorrow. Uh, but that's pretty much what it is, uh, is this was the month of, um, being prepared. So, um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions for Cynthia?
I just have one. So what, the buses that go up Highway 4, do they carry chains on them in case they're required?
So, yes. So we have a, a couple options. Um, one, we have OnSpot Auto Chains, and so it's a push of a button, and they'll just spin, uh, which is amazing. But they are only good for maybe two to maybe three inches of snow, just depending on the snowpack. Um, if it gets really crazy, then we've got to get out, do a chain up, yeah. Um, we try to stay a little bit away from that because Apple Hill tends to be icy, and that's where we've ran into issues. Um, we'll head up, we've got the chains on, and you know, chains don't work with ice. They just helps, help you slide. So, um, I think for next year, maybe some of the thoughts, uh, we have been talking about, I guess, is, um, looking at maybe a set of, um, uh, studded tires.
Yeah.
Uh, we were, and we were really hoping to get those new buses that we ordered, uh, some time ago, because they were all-wheel drive, and we would have been able to throw studs and chains in there as well, and those would have been awesome for up country. Um, it's a little bit smaller, more compact, and then have that ability, but, um, so it looks like we're still waiting, though. We'll, we'll ever get them.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you, and thank you for all the stuff. I mean, it's been a crazy couple of months.
It has been all crazy.
The little goodie bag, that's a great idea for people to get displaced or whatever, and out of there quick and a little, something to eat, and a little warm blanket. So, thank you.
You're welcome, yeah. I, it's just after going to so many of these events, um, you just see people. Red, Red Cross is a great job, and they usually have a lot of things for them. But the biggest eye-opener really was the, when the flooding happened, and seeing these people without anything at all. And it took some time to get those to them.
And a lot of them, well, they had to wait through water to get them.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I just don't want that to happen again. I want to show up with a bag ready to go, so if they need it, they have it.
Yeah, that's great. And, thank you. Any, oh, any public comment on it or anything? Oh, sorry, Justin, did I bypass you?
I just wanted to know if, um, like.
Sorry, buddy.
I think today you go up to West Point with the dial-a-ride, right, on Wednesday?
Normally, yes, we would.
So when this weather happens like we've had, what happens in that scenario? Do people call and they just, they can't go?
So what we do is, we do, we actually do a couple of things. One, we'll call out and talk to them if they haven't called us, if they really are wanting to go. We have a really good communication with those that, um, utilize our service because they're regulars. We know them by first name. We go down, our drivers, uh, well, we have one driver, but there's another driver that also has helped in the past. has helped in the past. They'll go down, and they'll chop their wood, stack it, take their trash out, do different things for them even. So we have a real close relationship with them. But anyways, we'll call them if they haven't called us, and we'll make arrangements to go a different day. So if we don't go on, say, today, but the weather is better tomorrow, we'll call them up and say, hey, do you need to get to the store? Do you need to go here? Do you have a doctor's appointment that you need to make? Can you rearrange it? Those kinds of things. So it's really more personalized for that group, just because it's a small, tight community, so that's what we do.
Thank you. Very impressive.
Okay, item number 10, staff reports. Ms. Raggio?
Nothing to report.
Erin?
Nothing to report.
Callie?
I have nothing to report, besides, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. We'll move on to item number 11, then adjournment of this meeting, and we will go into the closed session for COG.